Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM on June 11th, 2020. This is a select board meeting which is being conducted by Zoom. Fact TV is in, is recording this meeting and we are in remote locations. Consequently, our votes will all be taken by roll call. I'm Peggy Pashir. Steve DeLassio is with us. Cheryl Mayberry is with us. Sarah Downing is at Town Hall and Regina Borden is in another location as our minute taker. Sarah, are you going to put up our agenda, please?
Yes. All right, let's share screen.
Good.
Okay.
Let's go.
I make a motion to accept the accounts payable check register in the total amount of $151,620.32 for checks issued 6/12/2020. It includes a $79,981.91 payment to TenCo for the balance remaining on the new dump truck. 2018 warrant article.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about this accounts payable check register? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So the accounts payable check register is approved.
I make a motion to accept the payroll register totaling $27,177.50 for checks dated 6/12/2020 and the 941 payroll tax transfer of $5,279.42.
Second.
Are there any questions about this payroll register? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
I vote aye. Payroll register is approved.
I make a motion to accept the select board minutes of June 4th, 2020.
Second.
Any questions or comments about these minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
I vote aye. The select board minutes for June 4th are approved.
With regard to the committee reports, I think going forward, it should be the Walpole Fire District Commissioners Meeting, not district meeting.
Good idea because district meeting implies there are great many people there.
That's correct. And it's really the commissioners.
Right.
So I, we acknowledge those report.
Yeah, okay. We have acknowledged that report. And going on to building permits, please.
I make a motion to accept the 2020-15 building permit for MAP 9, Lot 17, Sub Lot 0, to build a wraparound 38-foot by 12-foot wooden deck.
I'm going to second, but I don't, I don't think it's a wraparound. I think the other deck is pre-existing. If I understood correctly, and they're just doing that one deck. On the other side, it happens to connect to the other one. But that, I think that other deck is pre-existing.
Look at it if you'd like.
Yeah, let's look at it just to be sure.
Yeah, let me toggle over to there. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to the picture. Because I think they're building this one and this one. The front porch exists.
Okay, well, we ought to be able to tell that.
Well, the permit request is for the 38-foot by 12-foot deck.
Oh yeah, you're right, yeah. Okay.
Right, and the other deck is pre-existing.
Oh yeah, she told me wraparound on the phone, so I just believed her. Okay.
Wants it to wraparound, that's why she's building the connection.
I wonder if we should confirm that, Sarah? Because then the building permit price will change.
Move the, move down and let's see what she said in the permit, please.
Yeah.
Move it back, Sarah, to the.
To go back up here?
Up, I guess, I want to say. Go up, yes. I want to see what, how she described things.
She described it by 38 by 12, which, you know, Cheryl's quite right about that. That's what she's claiming here. She must want to make it wraparound.
All right. So I still make the motion. It's been seconded, right?
Right, and no, I seconded. I just didn't want it to be a wraparound because I didn't think that applied.
Yeah, it's not a wraparound. It becomes one, but it's, yeah.
Building.
Okay.
Having corrected that, are there any other questions or comments about this building permit? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
I vote aye. The building permit then is, is approved. Let's go to the next one.
I make a motion to accept the building permit 2020-16, MAP 14, Lot 11, Sub Lot 2, to construct a 28-by-24 two-story home. The prior home on this location burned in April 2019.
Second.
All right, are there any questions or comments about?
Did Jody check with the zoning board? Do you know, Sarah?
She sent, copied what she sent you to Jan. We never heard a comment back.
Okay.
You did receive Jody's information though, correct?
Yeah, I did. I questioned it with Jody because it's on a sub. It's doesn't, the lot doesn't meet the standard. And I, I wanted clarification whether they needed to go to the zoning board. What do you think, Peggy?
Footprint.
Well, that's what.
Yeah, I don't know.
It was subdivided and it was approved by the planning board back in, what, 2017, I believe?
Well, it's a non-conforming lot, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it's a non-conforming lot.
Well, ordinarily, you have to get permission to increase the non-conformity. But is this being built on the old footprint? I don't know.
Yeah, right. That was the question I gave Jody.
Do you have anything besides this one page? Is there a picture or any drawing or any?
We'll go through, scroll through for you. Let me keep going down. They have their utility efficiency. This is a two-bedroom sewage disposal system, which is what the house will be. I know you'll have to, it's going to be like a little cave. And here's the inside. The bedroom's on the second floor. And here is the offsets.
So we don't know the size of the house that burned?
No, it's, this is a res B, so the, I, it's a point, I know, point 75.8 acre lot. So my question is, if it's a res B lot, isn't that a smaller square footage that's required for that lot? To make it acceptable? Without getting the zoning?
I think you need to look at the property tax card and see if the home, the dimensions of the previous home are listed.
Yeah, it's a question. I don't have a problem with approving it tonight, under the condition that these questions get clarified.
I, I think that's fine too, because I'm just, I'm thinking we need to establish, you know, if, if they're building a different-sized home which is pre-existing, then I think other matters would kick in.
Well, then it's an expansion of a non-conforming use.
You go to the zoning board.
Then you go to the zoning board.
Wait, now with the planning board approved the original subdivision a couple of years ago? I mean, we have a letter, it was approved to subdivide.
Well, you can subdivide anything you want. Doesn't matter.
Okay, with, and it had a house on it, but they wouldn't, they, there was no note about being a non-conforming use at that point.
Yeah.
Well, maybe it isn't, but I, we don't know that, do we?
Okay.
So I'll make the motion to accept the 2020-16 building permit to construct a 28-by-24 two-story home, with the condition that the question of whether it's a non-conforming lot or an expansion of a non-conforming use get clarified before issue.
Second.
All right, are there any other questions or comments about it? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote then. Steve?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that building permit is approved with conditions. Okay, let's go on to the lighting business under old business. You, have you all had a chance to read? We have several things that apply to that, that are in our packet tonight. And obviously, there are two things. We did get a notice from the state that in fact, the state project that's going on on the bridge could cover the cost of installation. But we would re, as a town, would be responsible for its upkeep and maintenance in the future for three light poles on the wall pole side of the bridge. And we, of course, we, we've already agreed that we would pay for the operating costs of those lights. We also have, from North Walpole, an offer to pay for the lights. So we have a good deal to consider here.
I'll add to it. I did speak with Houghton today about how much maintenance would be required on the LED lights? And his feeling would be extremely minimal.
That's what I thought. It would be negligible to.
Yeah.
Unless somebody hit a pole or something bizarre.
Right, but from a general operating maintenance, he said it's.
Nothing.
Significant, right? Because of its LEDs. If it was the halide lights or the, all these other ones that were out there prior to LEDs, then that's another story. But LED lights on streetlights are very minimal.
So how do you feel about this? Are we willing to recognize and acknowledge we will be responsible then for the maintenance and upkeep of those lights as well as the monthly cost of the lights? And let the state assume the cost of installation?
You mean purchase and installation?
Yeah, purchase and installation. Does he not, it doesn't say purchase though, does it? It just says he's going to pick up the costs for changing out the existing lights to LED and rewiring the three light poles on the wall pole side.
No, we don't have to assume that they're going to pull out the old poles. I don't, you know, perhaps they can just change the light out, the lamp itself, and rewire the whole pole.
Which means that that cost of 3,700 and something wouldn't be met, need to be met by anybody else because it'll be in the project.
Right.
Right.
So we could thank Mr. Ahman for his offer. Now, that was a very generous offer, but I, it sounds as if the state will pick that up, which is our request. Is that right? Is that how you're all?
Yeah, it's the way I read it. Cheryl, you don't look happy.
I guess I'm just still, I'm just, I was just thinking that, you know, if something happens to the lights, we don't necess, you know, would we need permission, you know, to work on them being on the bridge when it's still state property? I think it's a minor concern, you know, if the lights have some longevity to them. I just, I feel like we've come a long way to get them to finally agree to pay for lights that I think that they should already have on the bridge.
I think it's almost five years of arguing about this.
I like that. We will have to sign an agreement. So we have another step to take. We can say yes to this plan of theirs.
Yes.
Agreement they have us to sign where we have another opportunity to say, whoa, wait, what are you getting us into that you didn't explain before?
Yeah.
I think them agreeing to pay the cost of replacing the lights is, is, I mean, a win for us.
It's a big step for them. It was a big step for them.
It was, and it, it's interesting that it coincided with our letters to our state representatives.
Well, sometimes.
You know, because they're copied on this.
Yes, they, they are.
On this, so. I'm, I'm okay with it too. I, I'm okay with signing an agreement.
Okay, well then, I will, we will get in touch with Jason Tremblay and ask him to send the agreement to us, all right?
Yeah.
Do we need to have a vote on this? Do you, would you be more comfortable that we move to at least move to the step, next step?
I make a motion that we accept the state's offer for the lights on the Arch Bridge and ask them to generate the agreement.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
I vote yes as well, so that, we've approved that motion and we will ask that they send us an agreement that we can sign. And obviously, as I said, I think that's the logical next step for us then. If it's not up to snuff, well, we can deal with that with. The next, Sarah, you have given us some updates you've put in here.
Right, this is. This is for the open container to waive it, just to update it? Because the way it's worded currently, I have it displayed, is that it would end after phase one and we're entering phase two on Monday, where people can have, where restaurants can have inside seating. But the inside seating really is only, they say 100%, but it's really only 50% once all the tables and chairs are removed in order to allow for six feet between each seating spot.
So these people would continue to have their outside seating, is what you're saying?
Right, if we go to phase two and allow phase two, they can then, it will allow them to be at or close to full capacity and be a, you know, profitability would be helpful for our local businesses.
Any comments?
No.
Is there a motion that we approve these?
I move to approve to waive the open container permit for Spencer's Place.
Okay, these are extensions.
Waive, okay, all right.
Through phase two?
Yeah, through phase two. And the same goes for Verdict's.
Be for both places?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about it? I think, didn't you, Sarah, speak to Tom today? And he intends to keep his outdoor seating for a while because of the limitations on the inside seating? And I'm sure that Spencer will want to do the same thing. If there are no more questions or comments, I'll call for a vote on this then, the motion to extend the open container waiver for both Spencer's and for Verdict's. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
I vote aye, so that motion is pass. Now going on to the emergency orders for recreation. There were a number of things that were changed today when the governor spoke. Do you want to throw up? Do you happen to have, Share, Sarah, that what we have issued already on recreation? Doesn't matter if you don't have it. Because today, in effect, at, in effect, at the news conference held at 3 o'clock, the governor said that pools had the right to open. There are some specific restrictions for them. But they, but he said we could open all pools. He also indicated that most sports could resume. Again, there are restrictions and groups are not to exceed 50 on some of these sports. And libraries can open, but they can only be at 50% capacity. We don't need to talk about the library, they'll take care of that. But the question about pools and outdoor sports, that's the one, it seems to me, that we have to consider.
So can you, can you see the order now?
Yeah. Did they publish the guidelines yet, Peggy? Do you know?
They're on, yes, I have the guidelines in my hand.
Okay.
Mentioned them. It, it says that you have to still can meet the six feet from one another at all times, even while you're in the pool. But they do allow free swim, swim lessons, water fitness classes, lap line use, swimming competition. They want appropriate physical, social distancing at all times. Then they go into a long list of what to do if there are competitive things going on and how to control spectators at swim meets and all the rest. And I'm not sure we've been involved in that. But they want six feet space from everything. So if in fact, there are benches or tables or the deck areas, everything has to be six feet apart. And you can use the pool deck. It had, you can limit it to the number of people who can sit in the chairs or towels as long as they're six feet apart. Members of the same household can sit together, but they have to be six feet from everybody else. And they have to be, the chairs that are used have to be cleaned and disinfected between each use. So you can have eating areas as well. They have to be open. Again, the distance is in effect and the chairs and the tables cleaned and disinfected between each use. And they'd like touch-free garbage cans for disposal of refuse. And businesses are responsible for cleaning up eating areas and so on. And you have to have hand sanitizers available. That's part of, only part of the long list. But the rest of the list is that are things that we've read before. And as I said, a great many of the pool restrictions speak to the competitive sports, competitive swimming. And I'm not sure that our pool gets involved in that.
No, I don't think we do.
So the decision is whether or not the pool is to be open. As of Monday, it can be open. We know that it will take some time for it to be brought up to speed before we can allow people in.
I think you have to get all the appropriate equipment first, right?
Yeah.
I don't know if they have hand sanitizers in the pool area.
No, those are things they'll probably have to buy.
Yeah, they'll have to figure out how to do it. And I guess that we should be training our pool manager as well as the.
Well, I don't even think we've hired lifeguards yet, so.
If we, yeah, we don't even know if we have lifeguards, but everybody needs to be trained besides that, so.
So I'm going to tell you, Justin and I already had this conversation when the guideline came out. And we've heard back from eight of the nine lifeguards, they want to come back. So we had, we've heard of, as of this evening, we've heard out of eight, we've heard from eight of them. We have a couple applicants, so we think we have enough staff. Our pool manager is looking into their recertification for the people that need it because they got delayed because of COVID. So she's going to look into that. They think there's an extension on that for recertification. So we do have enough people, it sounds like. And it sounds like our, our pool manager may be taking a position in Bellows Falls for next year, so she may still be available to manage the pool another year. So it looks like we've got some staff. And then we talked about having a meeting next week between Justin, the new director, and the pool manager and myself to go over these parameters and requirements.
Great.
Will take to do all of these things, but could we be prepared to open 29th? That's two weeks essentially.
I think that's usually when we do open, we were thinking that the pool prep might take a week. I'm not sure if it'll take longer than a week. So we can shoot for the 29th.
I think that would be a good date. We can publish that now. It will hopefully then keep, let people know we're working toward opening the pool and we will be, they won't be as unhappy with us, at least for a while. So, but I think that's what I would work towards, is the 29th of June.
Yeah, then my only question was the rule, the rules regarding the restrooms, you know, the changing area. I know that there was something in there about locker rooms and things like that, but I'm still not clear on the bathroom requirements. Like, do they have to, you know? I think they should be made available because I, you know, definitely don't want anyone peeing in the pool.
They have to be made available.
Right, I don't, but I don't know what the parameters are about maintaining them. I'm still not clear on that. That's the only piece I'm not clear on.
I don't think that was covered in this directive, actually. It was in the earlier one when they were really talking about pools in fitness centers. But there really isn't anything in this one. They tell everybody to, you know, bring your own equipment, but there's so much in here about the swim events, meaning the competition and that sort of thing, that they don't go into some of the other details that were in the first direct, set of directives.
My biggest question is, what is the capacity of the swimming area at six foot apart? How many people can you let in?
Very high. I think it's Bellows Falls that I read. Maybe I was misread, maybe it was Brattleboro. When they open, they are going to open in aliquots of 45 minutes with lifeguards and you have to reserve the time that you use.
Yeah.
Forty-five minutes, they will blow the whistles and everybody has to leave. And then there's a break and everybody come, another set come in for 45 minutes. That's going to be complicated for them to, to keep track of, but, but that is an alternative.
Yeah, what I, what I don't want to see happen is a family go down there and they're not allowed in.
I'd rather make it just open, period.
Yeah. And play it by year as far as the capacity goes.
Right, and if we have to hire somebody else whose job it is just to sweep out, swab out of the locker rooms and the bathrooms, that may be what we have to do to keep them clean.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't agree with having it just be completely open. I think there's a lot of people that use the pool and we're going to end up having people show up and not be able to use the pool or have to wait. So I think that there's some, I think we should put some more thought into that and talk about reserving time. And that way, we at least can control the volume of people once we determine what the capacity is.
Yeah, but I think the pool director probably knows approximately what the cool, cool capacity is. And I have no objection to setting time limits, but we'll have to, they have to recognize that it will be difficult for them to maintain that.
Right, I, I think that, I think Justin and Craig and Stephanie and I should probably sit down and hammer out a proposal for consideration.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yes.
There's a lot to talk about there, Cheryl.
I agree.
Yeah.
Stephanie fortunately is an experienced pool director for our pool, so she will know a lot of talking about.
Yes, for sure.
The other piece I have, well, that's let that then, but we will aim for the 29th of June. Let's think then about the other sports that we have. The issue that we had last week of people wanting the basketball courts open. There's nothing that speaks directly to that at all. All of the other sports that I've read, you know, speak to things without identifying the sports, but it speaks more to the baseball, soccer, that sort of thing. They don't identify some of the sports that are now available. It's just team sports. And that's certainly what basketball is. But we may, what we could still, if we wish, they know. But we may, what we could still, if we wish, they know team basketball this year, but groups may use the courts for a pickup game if they'd like.
You know, the barn door is open.
I know it is. That's why I'm...
So I would say that the basketball court should be open for, for use, for public use.
And we ask that they try to limit the number of people there, so.
Right. Try to limit and try to do social distancing where it makes sense.
Yeah, basketball is not a, a game where you can have...
I, I realize that, but spectators and so forth and...
So we will be changing this stay-at-home, which now he's calling safe at home. What he did today. I think the same conditions apply to the tennis and, and pickleball. I haven't seen any...
Just, yeah, my guess is the recreation center should be open to public use.
Right. That's right. We can just say that and we can indicate that the pool will be open on the 29th of June.
I would say tentatively, yeah. Where, um, Justin's already reached out to the pool guy to see how soon he can start preparing the pool.
All right, that's good.
And remember, you don't know what's underneath the cover yet.
We're optimistic.
Yes.
Well, let's all be optimistic.
Yep.
Works out all right. Okay, so we'll redo this stay-at-home order and call it safe at home and indicate that things will be open and are open. Is there anything else that we need to put on it? I mean, we begin, need to have as part of our discussion, and this is not recreation, is what we're going to do with town hall.
Yeah, I think you open everything.
We open town hall effective next week sometime. I know that Sandy has been very happy with the results of asking people to make appointments.
No, I think we can continue to do that. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't continue that.
I think that's good for distancing. That's one way we help people maintain distances so we don't end up with large groups congregating in the hallway.
Yeah, and I don't think we should take down any of those shields or anything like that. I think all that should remain in place.
Has to remain in place, absolutely. That's part of the, the distancing, really.
Yep, and I think, well, anybody that meets in the town hall needs to do the social distancing. It's part of the general guidelines.
I think so too. Sarah?
Yes?
With us? You're hearing all of this. How about our office? Have you had, have you maintained appointment times for people?
Yes, we have.
And how about, how do you feel about continuing that?
I think the appointment time works out very well because otherwise you are going to get congregants in the hallway. And that's not desired. So it is a way to stop that. But you could, on the other end, you know, open up, you know, for larger group meetings with social distancing. So the boards and the commissions and other groups.
Okay. Let's write that up, please, so that people know. We'll put it out through the wall pole in because the clarion is not going to be producing anything for a while. But we can post this in the usual places that we post notices. All right? And how about our meeting? Are we going to meet on, by Zoom next week or are we going to be in town hall safely distanced? I think the choice is up to us, in this case, not the governor.
It doesn't matter to me.
I, I just, there's universal guidelines for us, stay-at-home, which is now safe at home. I think that all boards should follow those guidelines because those are for employees and we should consider ourselves employees in this context.
Absolutely, we are.
Okay, so that starts with the social distancing and the taking a temperature and all those kinds of things, at least for the time being.
Would you like, you want to meet back in town hall next week?
Yeah, I agree with meeting in town hall, but I think we need to follow some of those universal guidelines and consider ourselves employees of the town. And that will put some safeguards in place.
I suggest that we meet in the large meeting room and that rather than at one table, we have at least two so that we have some distance between us, maybe even three tables. And if we need to, if, I don't know what, if we can't hear each other, we can always use microphones. But I suspect we can hear each other in there.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Gina, are you comfortable with that?
Um, yes, I think so. Sometimes it is harder to hear, but if everybody, you know, keeps remembering to speak up, it should be okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Lori Landry and Jim Ben were supposed to join by Zoom next week, so how will we adapt to that?
Do you want to do this one more week because of that and then?
Yeah, that's okay with me too.
That would be all right. Why don't we do it one more week and that way we can work with them?
Yeah.
Ask them to have to drive down to a wall pole or...
That works out okay.
So we'll meet one more time next week. And then after that, we will meet back at town hall. But we will in fact meet in the larger room for more space for distancing. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
If you don't, all right, let's move on then to new business if we can, please.
Do you have the cemetery deed, Sarah?
I'm going to go back over there. Meeting packet.
Here we are. Okay. All right, may we have a motion to accept this?
I have, make a motion to accept cemetery lot deed, deed 513, Timothy and Diane Laura.
Second.
Right, are there any questions or comments about this?
Yes. I want to understand the difference between a plot and a lot. So if it's $25 per lot and they paid $400, that tells me that they bought 16 lots in, with a total of four plots. So there's four lots to a plot. Is that correct?
I don't think so. It's $400, I think, per plot, which is a lot.
Which is a lot. Yeah, we've never had that question before.
So it says $400 and then further down the fifth row, it says $25 per lot. So I was confused about the total and I had asked Jody about the difference. And she was saying that I should ask Dale. So is that, should that be $100 per lot and that's why she got charged $400?
No, if the $25 comes to the town, the rest of it goes into the cemetery fund.
Oh, so that's just a portion of the total sale and it's a hun-
Right.
Okay, so is this one lot? Is this...
I think plot and lot are interchangeably here. It's the same meaning, but it wasn't consistent in the document.
So we get $100 or this $400?
No, we get 25.
Five.
It's 25.
So the lot, the lot is $400.
Correct.
We get 25 and 375 goes to the cemetery.
Maintenance.
Maintenance.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I just was curious. I didn't understand.
Uh, I'm trying to read down through it. Can you move it up a bit, please?
Um, up, like this way?
Yeah, so that I see the bottom. Yeah, that's right. You know, they, they put, you can put four cremations in one plot. That's what I was looking for. I knew that was a fact, but I wanted just to where it was.
I just, you, there's nowhere on this document that says that they paid for one plot or, or, you know, it, it just has a dollar amount. And since there's no total, I'm assuming from the lot number, it's only one plot, which allows four burials.
Of cremation, yes.
Yeah, so cremation.
Yeah, that's right.
But this is in fact, because it has one lot number, that this is one, this is for one?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
This is a very, very old deed. It was written a long time ago.
Okay.
All right. So do we have a second for this?
Yeah, no, I seconded. I just had a, right, no, that was seconded. It just...
Any other questions or comments about it? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
I vote aye. Cemetery deed for a lot, deed 513 is approved. Informationally, Rich sent us a record, you know, of what we have collected so far in taxes. And we're just at about 25% at this point. And we still have three weeks to go. I don't know where we were at this time last year, so I can't give any comparison.
We should ask Sandy what she thinks.
Yeah, I will. I will.
That's probably the best barometer.
Right. But we are collecting, but I'd be happier if we're coming in faster. We still have a lot to go. So that was, that's just informational. The next thing is really basically informational as well, and that's from the Health Trust. Sarah, have you, you want to comment on any of these? There were two directives that came from Health Trust today.
Yes, this one is about the fact that there's actually been a low usage of Health Trust, of health insurance because of COVID-19. So many people were not going to see their doctors or getting just low-level operations and all, anything involving medical that wasn't COVID-19. So they, due to the low usage, they're, they're going to offer what they called unexpected, oh, what do you call this here? Surplus distribution. And this has happened before. I don't know, maybe, I think somebody like, you know, Peggy, if you were there, but Steve, a couple of years ago, there was some sort of surplus like this where the town is, you know, both parties...
When the fund has a surplus, they distribute it back to the, the members. This goes on whenever you have pooled insurance. It works the same way with Primex. They just reduce the rates.
The, the town gets a certain portion back and I think the town reimburs the employee, whoever, whatever plan they were on, you know, a single, two, two-person or family, you know, they get a ratio of that back.
Yeah, this isn't unusual.
It's, we haven't had it, this is the first time since I've been here we've had it, so.
Yeah, it's, it happens in pools insurance.
At least five years ago that, or prior.
Yeah.
I think they've obviously saved a great deal of money on dental plans and we don't have dental plans.
We don't have dental.
That won't apply to us. That...
I mean, my car insurance is giving me like $25 a month off.
I, I have gotten credits on mine as well.
Yeah, it's, they're just generating a surplus that's going to be given back.
I think the other thing that Peggy was saying that I, I sent to employees and copied the board was that Health Trust is offering a waiver of any of the fees if an employee has COVID-19 testing. All the, you know, out-of-pocket will be waived through the end of December.
You can also have it right now, go to any one of the state places and get it done for free.
Which, even better.
Yeah, you just have to make an appointment.
Right, you don't need anything else. There's one in Dean you can go to or one in, what, Claremont, I think?
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions about this? Next item under new business is the annual meeting invitation we've received, which is next Tuesday. This is by Zoom as well. And I would expect that it'll continue that way. They've taken too much time to put this all together. It's at 3 o'clock and it's Southwest Regional Planning's annual meeting. And I suspect you'll be there, Cheryl, won't you?
Yes.
I will too. I've already indicated I would attend. So is there any other new business to come up? Right, hearing none, I'm going to ask us to go out of our select board meeting and go into, I'll adjourn the select board meeting. And we'll go into the Hooper trustee meeting if I can have a, a motion to do that, please.
I make a motion to go into Hooper?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll, I'll declare that the Hooper trustee meeting is open and the time is approximately 7:16 PM on June 11th, 2020. So let's go to the meeting minutes first, please.
I make a motion to accept the Hooper trustee minutes of June 4th, 2020?
Second.
You have any questions or comments about those minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
I vote aye. So the trustee, Hooper trustee meeting minutes of June 4th are approved. And the next session?
Did we have a non-public session of Hooper last week? We did.
We did.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the non-public Hooper trustee session of June 4th, 2020, and the minutes shall remain sealed.
Second.
All right, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
I vote aye. So the non-public minutes, which will remain sealed, are approved. I actually wanted to talk about the scholarship meeting, but I don't know whether I want to put this out in the public yet because I don't think some of our actions are known to anybody else yet. So I'd like it to be in non-public. If I could have a motion to go into non-public, please?
I'll move to go into non-public Hooper.
Okay, we're, all right, then, we're in fact TV, so are we going to adjourn and do this in non-public select board adjoining that?
That's probably best.
It would be best.
So we'll log out and come back. Okay.
All right, we're going to log out totally, so we'll adjourn.